City Council meeting. We could please have your seats. The city council meeting of October 28, 2025 is called to session at 6:02 PM. Mr. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. We're gonna have the invocation led by Councilmember Andrew Lara, followed by the flag salute of Elena Sanchez from Montebello Gardens Elementary. And I'll call you just in a minute, Elena, after Councilmember does the invocation, okay?
If everyone can please stand and bow your head. God, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the community of Pico Rivera. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth and the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, we could have Elena Sanchez lead us in. All right, Elena?
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
My name is Elena Sanchez. I got a really great letter. My little brother has a good letter. But you're right here on your heart. Where did we get? I pledge allegiance to the flag and my face of the milk and truly for so it's a set. One nation under God, merely visible by liberty and justice.
Wow, Elena, great job! Elena, can you please come up here and join us, please? Wow, Elena, what a great job! Wow, amazing. Elena, we have a certificate of appreciation for you from all the city council members right here. We want to thank you for leading us in the pledge of allegiance tonight at our city council meeting. There you go, Elena. We're gonna put this right there, okay? Robert with the family? Good job. Okay, one more, Katie. Okay, in attendance with us, we have a couple of our commissioners. First, we have Justin Schmidt from the Planning Commission, and we have Daniel Garcia from our Veterans Commission. Thank you both for what you do here in the service here in the city of Pico Rivera. Thank you for coming out this evening. And should be noted that Daniel is a veteran commissioner. Thank you for your service. And, Lord willing, we'll see everyone on Veterans Day, November 11th. Yeah, oh, that's right, and the principal of St. Hillary's. Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, we have a special presentation. And at this time, I'm turning to Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, I'm gonna turn it over to Victor Farrar to introduce our city's tree adoption program volunteer.
Program. Along with the, uh, this was put together with the city's Office of Sustainability, the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps, and Green Latinos. The last two are nonprofit organizations that have been phenomenal partners to have this past year. Together, we pursue funding from the Basil's Earth Fund, secured over $150,000 to plant over 200 trees in our city. Uh, this is significant because these trees, many that are California natives, not only provide shade and improve walkability, but also lower heat, clean our air, and support local pollinators. The other important aspect of this that we're proud of is that the students that participate, or the local youth that participated in this program, not only learned about the environment planting trees, but they obtained leadership certificates, training. Among these, they completed more than 100 hours of life skills and job readiness training, including certifications in OSHA-10, first aid, CPR, and other software training, in addition to financial literacy and leadership training that they received. Um, here tonight, we have Renee Jimenez from the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps and Amanda Pantoja from Green Latinos, who also want to recognize our local youth. I will invite them up to the podium. I know they want to share a couple words.
Please, come forward.
Mic check. Man, what a good-looking group. Look at that. Only in Pico Rivera, right? Good evening, everyone. My name is Renee Jimenez, Associate Director with the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps. It has been an honor to work with Victor and Paola and the Sustainability Team here at Pico Rivera. Uh, it's a very, very forward-thinking group. Uh, we did acquire a small grant through the Basil's Earth Fund in partnership with Green Latinos, so very grateful for the funders, very grateful for our team at Green Latinos. Ultimately, the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps is a youth development organization dedicated to two things primarily. Uh, our nonprofit is dedicated towards youth development and environmental restoration. We do projects all over the San Gabriel Valley and beyond into our sangue mountains. So if you want to fight climate change, if you want a job, if you want to do something about our community and enhance it, join us, join other local youth development organizations or workforce development organizations. There's jobs all over the place. You just gotta know where to look. Um, so it has been an honor working with the city of Pico Rivera and Green Latinos. The next four to six weeks, we're gonna finish planting over 200 trees throughout the areas of Pico Rivera, but we need your help. We want to find those areas that need the most urban canopy, that need the most shade. If we have a street that has a location for a tree, great, but we really want to impact those areas in our city of Pico Rivera that need it the most. So please sign up for Pico Rivera's Tree Adoption Program. We're gonna be finishing off, hopefully before the holiday season in December. And for the most part, thank you very much for your time. It's been great working with Paola and Victor, and especially Green Latinos. And I'll kick it off to Amanda. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amanda Pantoja, and like Renee said, I'm with Green Latinos. I'm really happy to be here today. It took me two hours in rush hour traffic to get here, so I'm relieved and excited to be in a room with every single one of you and out of my car. Um, but yes, I'm here with Green Latinos. We're a national organization of environmental advocates fighting for environmental justice for our communities. We work nationwide, at the state level, and at the local level. And we've been working with a variety of organizations here in L.A. to expand urban greening for our city. And we're so happy and honored to be working with the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps, as well as the city of Pico Rivera, to expand trees and expand tree canopy for the city. I'm sure you all know that there is a high need for trees and ways to stay cool. It was oddly hot today. I'm sure you all were outside for a bit, and it would be nice for our cities to have those places for us to recreate and get relief from the heat. And so San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps, and as well as the city, with the city's tree adoption program is doing just that, to relieve trees. And we just want to say we're so excited to have done this partnership with the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps and are looking forward to continue to expanding this work. It does not stop here. We will continue to be advocating to make sure that resources go into our communities to make sure that we have adequate green spaces for us to live and enjoy and live healthy, green, sustainable lives. So we're excited to be honoring the group that helped make this happen with the trees, tree planting. You all are doing incredible work, and it really is a testament to the real solution, which is on-the-ground, homegrown folks planting trees and fighting for climate resilience. So thank you so much, and thank you.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the city of Pico Rivera, we appreciate the partnership, and as you said, it doesn't stop here. We have some certificates of appreciation that we want to distribute out to the individuals. So Victor, if you could please do the honors, and we can bring up the individuals, and then may take a group photo.
All right, one, can you hear me? Okay. Uh, when I call up your name, if you could please join us, Renee and Amanda, if you could please join us as well. Dante Vasquez Avila. Jonathan Castillo. Jessica Estrada Guzman. Isabel Parada. Karisma Reyes. Anna Saucedo. And Rosemary Valdez. Yeah, so unfortunately, not everybody could make it, but this is the team helping make Pico Rivera a dream come true. Give it up for a dream. And then could we get one more person? Reyes. Come on up, man. Come on up, real quick. Give it up for Reyes. Come on, Reyes. He's working behind the scenes, making sure we're on track. Sorry.
Yeah. Let me do this one here. Okay, moving along, we're gonna go ahead and recognize an individual to receive the Mayor's Volunteer of the Year Award, Mr. David Torres. But before we do that, I need to share a little bit of background on Mr. Torres here. On behalf of the city of Pico Rivera, we honor David Torres for a lifetime of teaching, mentorship, and service. Teaching karate since 1964. What began in his garage in his early twenties became a legacy. Since opening his dojo on Telegraph Road, over 28,000 students have walked through those doors. He empowers children and families, often serving as a second father to students in need and connecting learners of every age. His students are family, and each one is a part of his living legacy. Alongside his wife of 22 years, Hilda, a fierce competitor, he models discipline, partnership, and heart. Beyond the dojo, he has volunteered for the city of Downey for 10 years, giving back in his free time. On a personal note, way back yonder, when I would ride my bicycle and I would look in through that glass window of his business, you would see the students, you would see the families participating. This individual is a classic example of giving back to the city of Pico Rivera. So tonight, the city of Pico Rivera proudly presents this proclamation to Mr. David Torres in recognition for more than five decades, five decades of teaching, mentorship, and community service. Thank you for strengthening our generations. So Mr. Torres, if you could please step forward, and we're gonna present. So the 2025 Volunteer Mayor's Award goes to Mr. David Torres. There's a nice proclamation, and we have a nice award for Mr. Torres. That's right.
That's awesome.
Take a picture.
Be respectful, ready, bow. Again, be respectful, ready, bow.
It's a good. Oh, really good, Robert.
Come on down, say. What is carrying? He's got some confidence.
Yeah, no, we're gonna, maybe we could take one with the students and the participants that went through the program. But at the end of the day, David tells me it's a good thing we got a bus of 1,000 on its way over here. So if you want to take a photo with some of the, your family, you have your family right here.
My wife and daughter.
And then we'll let you share some. And if you want to share some remarks after you take the photo, David, we'll share some.
Go ahead, up. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have my family come up first, my wife. This is my daughter. And yes. They say behind every professional man, there's a woman, and this is the one that kept me in line. This is my wife, Hilda. My mother-in-law, Maria, and my son, David.
Robert, let me have him. Do you want to hold the proclamation?
Yes, sir.
I have permission to ask my kids to come up, so the one that was making you bow, he's the only one that got kicked out of the class, so. But if my students could come up here for a group picture, I appreciate it. Vicky, come on up, please, Vicky. As they're coming up, I just want to say that I'm homegrown Pico Rivera. I went to Pio Pico, North Ranchito, North Park, El Rancho.
Right there, right there, right there by the table, right there by the table.
Right by the table.
We need someone this side. We need someone this side.
Give me the little ones.
Crystal.
All right, can we guys come on the right side? Fill it in on the right side, please.
Right here, right here, look at it.
All right, we got a really large group, so I'm gonna take like three photos. I'm gonna make a panoramic so we can say everyone is, okay?
I just want to say thank you to my kids who showed up. Again, I'm glad that all 28,000 didn't show up at the same time. I really want to thank the mayor. Uh, one day, I was cleaning my windows, and he comes up and he tells me, "I remember when I was a kid, I used to ride my bike by here." I go, "Wow, that's like aging me here." Like, you could have told me you cruise by in your car or something, but he said he was on his bike. But like I was mentioning, I was born here and, not born here, but I was raised here in Pico Rivera. I came here at the age of two, went to Pio Pico, North Ranchito, North Park, graduated from El Rancho. And so my roots are here, and I really want to thank the mayor for heartbelt, and I really thank you. And I just, one of the, one of the young ladies who called me up on the phone asked me if I could put all my thing as far as into one word, what would it be? And I couldn't come up with anything right there, and then I've thought about it, and it's just, you know, I'm just very, very blessed, okay? And I thank God for it. Who could spend 50 years doing what you love, okay? And Mayor just said right now, I give so much to the kids and all that, but you don't know how much I've gotten back. And I thank you so much. Thank you. A couple of shit.
Thank you once again, Mr. Torres. Job well done. Thank you. Uh, let's go ahead and move along with the agenda here. We're gonna go into our public hearing on item number one. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. City Manager, any memo?
Uh, Mayor, we do have a presentation. I'll turn it over to Alvi Benteckord to introduce our consultant.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'll let our guests exit before we begin.
Yes.
We are very happy to present to you the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan that was recently approved by Calways S. and FEMA pending a signed resolution from the council. Uh, we did offer a couple of updates to the course of the process. The presentation will include that. But for now, I'd like to hand it over to Aaron Fannenstiel from Atlas Planning Solutions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Aaron Fannenstiel with Atlas Planning Solutions. We supported the city in the preparation of the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I'll walk you through a quick presentation for tonight. Is there a clicker or? This is one piece of an overall project. Uh, we are in the process right now of updating the Emergency Operations Plan as well as the General Plan Safety Element, which are several of the tools the city has to address hazards. Uh, this project, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, we were able to complete before the other two. Uh, so tonight, we're just gonna walk you through that process. Uh, but rest assured, you'll see the other two projects come before you at some point. Uh, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, sorry. Apparently, I'm having a, here we go. Uh, is again just one piece of this puzzle. Uh, the, a city like Pico Rivera, you have a number of tools that you use to address hazards within your community. Uh, most of these are natural hazards, as well as some human-caused hazards. Uh, the General Plan Safety Element is one of those tools. It's a very broad, uh, plan, and it has a lot of, uh, general information in it, whereas your Emergency Operations Plan is very detail-oriented, uh, but it's also very short, has a very short timeframe of when you're using it. And the Hazard Mitigation Plan sits right in the middle. Uh, so tonight, we're just updating or sharing with you the update to the plan. Uh, this was conducted by the Community and Economic Development Department. Uh, and the reason for this plan and why you want to have it in place is to provide access to future mitigation grant opportunities with Federal Emergency Management Agency or FEMA. to future mitigation grant opportunities with Federal Emergency Management Agency or FEMA. This plan's for a variety of users. So first and foremost, your city departments, this is where they have access now to pursue FEMA grant funds if they submit applications for grants. But ultimately, it really comes down to you as decision-makers and how you want to improve the quality of life for your residents and businesses. This tool can help you by accessing additional funding sources that are not available when you don't have this plan. Hazard mitigation in and of itself is really just sustained actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to life and property. So this is really focused on how can we understand what are the hazards that we're most concerned about and discuss those in this plan, then analyze what are the potential risks, identify policies or projects that you can undertake to manage that risk, and then ultimately, over the next five years, these plans have a five-year shelf life, is implement the plan and start to work on securing additional funding to address some of those risks. This plan was not done in a vacuum, so we worked closely with your community development department staff and then a variety of other departments, Public Works, LA County Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, Parks and Recreation. And then we also coordinated with a variety of stakeholders. So we talked with the school district, we talked with one of the assisted living facilities, I think it was Pico Rivera Gardens. As a stakeholder, they were interested in the planning process. We've had conversations, significant conversations with both sheriff and the LA County Fire Department, not only with this process, but with the emergency operations plan as well. So we've really tried to stay engaged with a variety of stakeholders as well as city departments that play a key role. The hazards in your plan are, you have a variety of them. They've basically come down to a couple of key categories, though. So we looked at adverse weather and a variety of topics under adverse weather, things like extreme heat, like the project that was presented today with 200 trees being planted. That's actually a great mitigation strategy for one of the hazards that's already in your plan. So the beauty is, in five years, you'll be able to take credit for mitigating that hazard through that program. Seismic shaking or seismic hazards, epidemic and flood or flooding hazards, and then human cause hazards is another category that we use to address some of the, the man-made or human-caused types of hazards that your community may be prone to. We did some community outreach where we received some feedback on an online survey. We got 96 responses from the public on that survey, which is not a bad result for a plan like this. We had a webpage that was created to share information with the public. And then we also did a number of other outreach and engagement activities. We actually had an activity in this room. We came to one of the senior breakfasts, sat down with a variety of attendees, were about 90 or 100 people in attendance, and had some great conversations with those individuals. We also did a couple of other meetings. This is not the first time you've seen me. We were also in front of Planning Commission earlier this month, and then done, like I said, some stakeholder coordination with some other parties like the school district and Pico Rivera Gardens. So here's where we are for tonight. We, we went through the planning process starting in the fall. The plan went out for public review in May. It went up to the California Office of Emergency Services for their part in this process. They reviewed the plan, they provided, provide us with any feedback. We make whatever changes are necessary to make sure we're an adherence to FEMA's guidance. It then goes to FEMA. It was actually a short trip to FEMA. They were only, they only needed the plan for about a week, gave us approval, and then we were able to package it up and bring it back to you for final adoption, which is tonight. And then once we have the resolution of adoption, we will attach that to the plan and send it right back to Calways S. and FEMA so that they can close the process out, and you have a thumbs up and a happy sticker from them to keep moving on over the next five years and start working on doing some implementation. So for tonight, your action is really just a resolution of adoption to adopt the hazard mitigation plan. And I am here to answer any questions that you might have, as well as Hector Hernandez, who I've been working closely with, and wanted to just open the conversation.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, there was a recommendation, or do you want us to address any questions, comments from colleagues?
No, if there's any questions from the council, feel free. If not, we can move the item.
Councilmember Laura.
Thank you. So looking at the plan, and I don't mean to be a stickler, this isn't one of those gotcha questions, but I just want to make sure we get this right.
For sure.
So on page 98, where you break down Pico Rivera vulnerable population metrics, you go through, you list the population, you list the median household income as 107,000. Is that, is that an accurate reflection of the median income in?
That is the reflection of the median income based on the census, community survey, American Community Survey results. So we pull that census data. It's not the 2020 numbers. I believe those are from 2022 or '23, which is the most available information.
Okay, just, that seems a little bit high on my end based on, but I defer to, if it seems like you're kind of tuned in, then I'll defer to you on that point.
Yeah, we do try to reference as much reputable information as possible. And so when we're putting in statistics like that, we're trying to pull the latest census information that's available.
I did receive a concern from a member from the school board. They were a little concerned that, okay. Why don't we, why don't we bring the school board member up and address her concerns directly so that it's not being redundant?
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the city council, there was no written comments received for this public hearing, but there was one oral. Mayor, you have it in front of you.
And that's Esther Mejia regarding item number one.
Good evening. I am here as a Pico Rivera resident, just want to clarify that. Good evening, honorable mayor, council members, and city manager. I want to commend the city council for the thoughtful work reflected in the draft local hazard mitigation plan. Respectfully, I did notice the survey participation appears to have been limited. Because this plan will guide how we prepare for and respond to future emergencies, it's so important that our community feels informed and invested. I appreciate that this is a living document, and I'm confident the city will continue to outreach efforts to strengthen public awareness and ownership of the plan. Some of the feedback particularly resonated with me from the survey, some suggestions to activate CERT, I am CERT certified, and to engage houses of faith and preparedness efforts. These trusted local networks can play a powerful role in building community resilience. Thank you for your leadership and continued commitment to keeping our residents safe and prepared. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, mayor, and we're gonna, we're gonna continue to engage our stakeholders. Again, as mentioned earlier, this will feed into our emergency operation. So this is one step of a number of processes that we'll undertake to ensure that our residents are safe at the hazards.
Is there any other discussion on, at least? So do we need to do a roll call or anything, a roll call to continue it? Okay, so move it. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
It's moved by councilmember Laura. Do I have a second? Second by Mayor Protem, roll call, please. Move forward.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Camacho? Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move into public comments. Can we have Lauren Talbot?
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. My name is Lauren Talbot, and I'm the community library manager at the Pico Rivera Library and the Rivera Library. Here are our updates for November. We are currently offering the In-N-Out Cover-to-Cover Reading Program at both the Pico Rivera Library and the Rivera Library. Kids ages four to 12 can earn a gift card for a free hamburger, cheeseburger, or grilled cheese sandwich from In-N-Out by reading for 300 minutes or by reading five books. Kids can earn up to three gift cards, and this program is ongoing until Saturday, November 15th. Teens are invited to our Day of the Dead program at the Pico Rivera Library on Wednesday, November 12th at 4:00 p.m. They will learn about the history of this special festival and also design a nicho and other forms of art. Smarty Pants Storytime for kids ages two to five at the Rivera Library is moving to Wednesday afternoons at 1:00 p.m. starting on Wednesday, November 12th. Parents can register for the program online through our website. Both the Pico Rivera Library and the Rivera Library will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th for Veterans Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening once again. My name is Esther Mejia. I'm here as a Pico Rivera resident to express my strong support for the Community Health Alliance Coalition of Pico Rivera and its efforts to protect residents from the dangers of secondhand smoke and multi-unit housing. All residents of Pico Rivera deserve the right to a healthy living environment, free from the harmful effects of secondhand smoke. I attended a Coalition Town Hall last August, and we learned some important facts. There is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. The health risks are especially severe for children, seniors, and individuals living with asthma and other chronic conditions. Because secondhand smoke drifts through ventilation systems, windows, and shared walls, and can cling to surfaces, residents living in apartments and other multi-unit housing remain at risk, even when they do not smoke themselves. Local public opinion surveys show strong community support for additional protections among more than 475 residents surveyed, which is a high number for a survey. 95% support banning smoking in indoor common areas, and 84% support making all residential units smoke-free. Pico Rivera has demonstrated leadership in protecting public health through its tobacco control policies, policies including tobacco retail licensing. I respectfully urge the city council to continue its leadership in advancing public health by exploring policies that safeguard residents in multi-unit housing from involuntary exposure to secondhand smoke. Such action would reaffirm Pico Rivera's commitment to health, safety, and quality of life for all members of our community. Thank you for your leadership and dedication to the well-being of Pico Rivera residents.
Thank you. Next speaker, and we also received a written comment, is Angelica Fregoso.
Good evening, mayor and honorable members of the city council. On behalf of the UCLA Anti-Vaping Champions Program, of which I am the program manager, I am here to express my strong support for getting a motion to either have an agenda is discussion or to draft an ordinance in relation to smoke-free multi-unit housing for the city of Pico Rivera. Like many others in attendance at the city council meeting, we share the common goal of combating the negative health impacts of tobacco use. Our coalition represents healthcare providers, educators, parents, youth advocates, and community members. We also cooperate with over 900 pediatricians through our partnership with the local chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, an organization that spans seven counties and has its headquarters located nearby in Pasadena. As healthcare providers and community members, we see the negative impacts of tobacco products every day. Tobacco use remains the leading cause of preventable disease and death, doubling the risk of heart attack and stroke and increasing the risk of lung cancer by 23 times. Even tobacco exposure through secondhand or passive smoke, which is smoke inhaled from others, releases carcinogens. This exposure increases the risk of lung cancer in non-smokers by 30%. These health risks are disproportionately seen in our communities living in multi-unit housing as more adults that live in multi-unit complexes compared to single-family homes smoke. In California, about 1 in 4 adults living in multi-unit spaces reported smoking. This smoke can travel to all non-smoking members living in that same space, neighbors, and other units that share ventilation or plumbing systems. Moreover, secondhand tobacco exposure also increases the risk of teenage smoking, in turn perpetuating a new generation of smokers. By bringing to the table and adopting local ordinances, significant improvements can be made in reducing tobacco-related harms, ensuring the health and well-being of your community members. Thank you for your consideration and commitment to public health and the overall well-being of your constituents. I also have two letters of support here. I don't know if they can be submitted for public record, please.
City manager?
Yes, mayor. Been working with Dr. Sanchez on this issue. We plan to bring an ordinance to city council in January for council's consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's continue along. Agencies, agenda. We have our city council, we have a consent for items two through six, and then we have city councils seven and eight. Do I have any a motion on two to six?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Lutz, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Laura, roll call on consent.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Camacho? Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Okay, next item, number seven, first reading introduction of an ordinance of the 2025 California Building Codes Title 24, Parts 1 through 12. City manager?
No memos, no public comment.
Roll call?
Oh, motion.
Motion.
Motion in a second.
Mayor Protem moves. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Lutz. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Camacho? Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Number eight, citywide artificial intelligence policy. City manager?
Yes, mayor, we do have a presentation tonight. I'm pleased to introduce the city's proposed artificial intelligence policy, which establishes clear and responsible guidelines for using AI in our organization. Want to thank our assistant city manager, Angelina Graves, for working on this policy. I'll turn it over to her for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we're happy to present to you and the community our work done to bring a formal AI intelligence structure to the city. We'll explore what is AI later on in this presentation, how it's being used in cities like ours currently, and how we've curated a plan to ensure responsible use. Before we get started, I'd like to mention that we're joined by our senior IT manager, Neil Mian, who not only has worked on AI in the corporate world, but cautiously and methodically reviewed the policy for which we are seeking approval tonight. So we, I know we all, we've all heard of it and used it and are probably, you know, a little fatigued by using it on a daily, day-to-day basis, but we want to, you know, just for the community and for the residents, define it a little bit. And we can think of it as software that can learn, reason, and make decisions, like a digital assistant that gets smarter over time. None of, none of this is new to us, but the idea of AI was transformed globally November 30th, 2022, the day that ChatGPT launched. A lot of these tools are in our daily lives now. We have Siri, that helpful tool on our phones. We also have Waze, which tracks the flow of traffic based on how fast their app users drive, and then submit that information base back to the same drivers. Tonight's presentation is how we at the city use it here for our daily functions. So here are just a few examples of how cities use it and can use it responsibly. So we have natural language processing, which are chatbots. They draw on a large database to provide answers to resident questions. You have machine learning, AI tools helping staff prioritize service requests, predictive analytics for traffic, like I just mentioned in Waze. And we also have generative AI, and that's, you know, primarily ChatGPT and Copilot, which can help you create new content, write a summary of meetings, draft a report. which can help you create new content, write a summary of meetings, draft any reports, et cetera. So what does A I mean to the city of Pico Rivera? So with moderate adoption, we can accelerate productivity in key departments all across the city. And even a one percent update in labor productivity eases that strain and enables us to focus on larger, more important, or more prioritized tasks. So we arrived at one specific software tool to use internally by staff, and that is Microsoft Copilot. And about three years, we took on the great endeavor of moving everything over into Microsoft Office three sixty-five. That enabled us now to add on this additional app, Microsoft Copilot. And that gives us an all-in-one solution in terms of, you know, uh, uh, creating A I content with the data that has already been validated, verified, and established in our own systems. So we keep talking about responsible A I use. And we want to, you know, uh, provide a few sentences on why. Because A I is powerful, but it is not perfect. It can reflect bias, make errors. You've all heard the terms hallucinations, and the way that it was described to us in earlier presentations is if you have a one thousand-piece puzzle and you've, you know, were able to, um, you know, put the puzzle together and you're only missing one piece. You can't find it, dog ate it. You take a piece from another puzzle and stick it in there. That piece doesn't belong there, right? But it puts the puzzle together. That, in a sense, is a layman's term of what hallucinations can be. Um, and because public trust depends on transparency, we have to be, we have to create a tool that is hallucination-free, transparent, provides fairness and accountability. So in collaboration with industry experts at the national level, we arrived at key principles to incorporate into Pico Rivera's policy. And here's the key principles before you. So we use A I to enhance, not replace, human decision-making. We avoid using A I for sensitive decisions without human oversight, and that's critical. We disclose when A I is used in public-facing services, and we train staff and document A I usage. So those are the core principles that we're establishing in the policy that we have, that we brought before you today. So the policy in your packet defines the responsibilities most important to us, and there you have them here. Transparency and accountability, ethical use and privacy protection, equity and fairness, governance and oversight, and training and incident response. So these are all things that we already do as, you know, public servants, humans, if you will, working as public servants in this organization. But now we have to ask this tool to uh, be able to provide that for us. But we also have to review, verify, and certify the information. So the guiding A I principles that we've included in the presentation in, in the policy apologies is that human oversight is required. We will not use it for surveillance or profiling, and that staff must disclose A I use in public services. So that's in all the documents that we will produce for public dissemination. And there are dos and don'ts. So the dos are do fact-check A I generation, generated content, use your city account for A I tools. It's very similar to um, your, you know, anybody's work email. Log your usage for transparency, and the tool that we've selected automatically does that for us, so we have a history and a trail. And, you know, ask your supervisor manager if you're not sure. The don'ts, do not submit confidential or sensitive data into the tool. Don't treat A I as an authoritative source, so that, you know, you have to fact-check, you have to verify, you have to review your work. And don't mix personal and work A I accounts. So that's things that we have already been used to with, you know, email and, you know, our city accounts. So we want to uh, talk a little bit about, you know, the path here, because it has been a while since all of this A I talk has been out there. And we know that there's been a lot of cities that have incorporated A I policies back a couple of years ago. The reason why we didn't is because we took a more methodical approach. So first, the city manager, myself, and Javier, the um, uh, the director of innovation and communications, actually took a course from U C Berkeley and M I T on A I strategies, particular to business and um, and the workforce. Uh, we then enrolled in the Gov. A I Coalition, which at the time were only eighty-eight member cities. Now it's over twelve hundred as of this date. And that coalition was um, the foundation for creating all of the policies um, uh, at the national level, approving them, and included the White House's review of all of these documents. And that's how we found ourselves curating uh, Copilot, right? So it went through the Gov. A I space. They validated all the softwares, validated the policies, even down to vendor contracts to be able to roll it out on the national level. So simply put, cities didn't have to do this one by one. It was the Gov. A I Coalition who, that put the stamp of approval on it and then disseminated it to the, to the um, nationally. You know, on a national level. Um, and we did test Microsoft Copilot, uh, which is a competitor to Chat G P T and actually also owned by Microsoft. And as many of us know, Chat G P T is a sub of um, Microsoft and uses the same background tool. And now we're at the point where we're testing it internally, a small user group, and it's going to be a kind of a train-the-trainer type of experiment where we get the uh, hands-on expertise to be able to train ourselves and then train the workforce on how to responsibly use it. So a little bit on Copilot, um, we evaluated several platforms, Chat G P T, Gemini, uh, and Copilot, and finally arrived at Copilot simply for the reasons that I articulated earlier, which was we already had the data in-house in Microsoft Office three sixty-five, and it draws on that and only that data. So it's not going out into the metaverse. It's not pulling stuff from other cities. It's not pulling stuff from, you know, Google News or anything. It's relying on our validated information to create content data for us. And that was the one that Gov. A I actually recommended. And that was the one that was created specifically for governments. But it took a while because obviously Microsoft had to get, have it validated from the federal government. And then it took them a while to launch and actually be able to sell it to other government agencies. So we're here now with the A I policy, and internally we've created manuals to be um, used to disseminate this new software to um, uh, the workforce. And upon approval, if this is approved tonight, we'll begin training, a training and awareness program at a smaller scale. We'll, we'll, we'll um, create an A I use committee first and have testers uh, across different departments to help develop and flesh it out, right, as we do with any new software. Uh, and we will begin a phased deployment of Microsoft Copilot um, uh, across departments when we've worked on all the kinks. And that concludes my presentation. I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Angelina. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Laura?
So my concern, but I think you touched on it, um, was where is the host, right?
Yes.
Like, we know that when people use A I, even though that there's a policy that says, don't put in sensitive data, you're gonna put in sensitive. You just have to assume that, right? So typically, when someone uses Chat G P T or Grok, that information goes and is hosted on their server, right?
Yes.
Not physically located in the confines of city hall, like our documents are, right? Like your documents on Microsoft, sensitive, like um, eyes-only documents. So, but it seems as if Microsoft Copilot has, the information's not hosted here. It's still hosted on their server, but it, it appears as if there's strict security checks to protect that data.
Yes, it is. Uh, there's, it's, it's, they host it on the cloud, but it's still our data, our separate content, our little mini server.
Okay.
Uh, that is hosted by them, so physically it doesn't take up space here, but it does take up space on the cloud, but is restricted from other sources being able to tap into it or us going outside of that. And I didn't bring a demo with me, but there's two different functions on there. Do you want to look up stuff in Copilot within work, the work environment or within the web environment? And so part of the training will be, we're looking for um, data and to create content within the work environment only. That is one of the restrictions, but it doesn't stop there, right? Because we, we still do at all levels, have a preparation, review, and approval process. That doesn't go away, right?
But my other, I, I have one more question and a comment. My other question is, are we, I like the fact that we're just drawing our, on our own internal data, right? When you, when you enter in a prompt and you're looking for an answer, you're looking to construct a policy, it's just pulling on things within the confines of Microsoft within Pico Rivera.
Yes.
But are we limiting ourselves? Are we limiting ourselves by not harvesting data, thoughts, ideas outside of what we've just gathered? Because I get the, I get the, the, the security bumper guards, but the, the flip side of that is, are we potentially handicapping ourselves?
There's two practical areas here. One is within the confines of the A I policy, and one is research that we already do on a day-to-day basis, right? So if we're talking about seeking or, or, or doing research of how many other cities do this, or what did this, this city do about this? Or as you'll see later, what is a county doing about this? That is still within, you know, the, the, the space of, you know, the web, Google. You know, we don't need to rely on Chat G P T or Copilot to do that research for us. We still need to validate it, right? And we do those things as we're comparing ourselves to other agencies, or if we're uh, pulling data about other agencies to recorded factual records, right? Public hearings, public notices, agendas, published agendas. So, you know, we're still, we're going to combine the two, right? But the generative A I tool is able to, uh, for example, if I create five staff reports all on the evolution of A I from the policy to the manual, to the dissemination, to the lessons learned, I provide five different staff reports throughout the course of two years. But then I want to give you a briefing on the summary of over those two years. That, all of that data, validated data exists and lives there. And the generative uh, tool comes in where I ask it to summarize all of that, that information, and where it would usually take me four to six hours to do that from start to finish, gather all the information, do the research, compile all the data. The, the tool does that for me, right? So I get back those four to six hours to dedicate to other priorities.
So then, Mike, thank you for all that, um, and thank you for this policy. Uh, my, my suggestion is that I, I think the vast majority of us use some sort of A I platform, right? Whether it's Chat G P T or, or whatever. You know, I, I'd encourage um, Mr. City Manager on sending your employees or staff to really refine their prompt engineering, right? Because that is where it lands, right?
Yes.
You could be lazy and just type in a prompt or ask it very direct. But if you give it a setting, give it a goal, give it um, an expertise level, then the level of response back to you is great hire and is more, it's more valued, right? It's, it's a greater worth. I think my suggestion next is, in maybe a year or two, one staff is, you've incorporated this, is to bring in a consultant who can help us implement A I, okay? And I say that because even though we're all using A I, we think, no, no, no. I think the deficiency where, with A I and business or A I and government is the implementation of it. It's not just generating reports. It's not just running financials. It's how can we use A I to become more efficient? How can we use A I to, to become more predictive, whether it's crime, whether it's fighting hazards? That, you know, that takes some time, but I think this is a, a good starting point. Thank you.
And, and I'll add that, uh, something to that comment, because when we were looking for these software applications and our needs and our need for training and, and the homegrown idea that we were trying to create for ourselves, uh, we asked the, you know, the, the, the subject matter experts, the, the software, um, uh, the big conglomerates, right? The big vendors that we usually call on, you know, to, to purchase software from. And they were so interested in what we wanted to do here that they brought on their um, uh, specialized consulting team, which I don't recall what major university they were from, but I think it was, it was not M I T, but it might have been Cornell, a professor from, from Cornell that was really interested in coming in and learning more about what we needed to be able to provide us a more customized um, training tool.
Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Lutz?
Yes, um, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Angelina. I have a question that you may or not know the answer to, but I was curious about risk management. What comes to general liability for the city? What has the insurance policy requirement of us as a city for the next calendar year? Are they asking that we use A I conservatively? Or are they putting the city from using A I because we're dealing with customers' ability bills and information? Here may not get leaked all the time.
In terms of how we're using customer information, um, that actually comes from separate and independent databases that are not included within uh, Copilot or the Microsoft space. So that information is safe, right? It doesn't cross over. In terms of the insurance and risk management, one of the um, first things that we had to do is create a cybersecurity plan, right? A technology plan. Have it refined. Test the cybersecurity plan, have incident response planning. All of those things happened very early on before we even crafted an A I policy. Then layering on, on top of that, then we had to look at our existing vendor contracts to see which ones provided A I. And if they did, then we had to essentially provide an addendum uh, for those that have A I tools that assist us to say, this is your responsibility in ensuring that the data is validated. So it's at all levels, right, with internally and externally. We've had uh, a few cybersecurity audit plans that we can't go into because it's cybersecurity, right? So we have to keep it kind of uh, private in terms of the steps that we went through. But all of that was very early on, a year ago. We were having those things finalized to get us ready for this.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Angelina. There be none? We need a roll call on this?
Mayor first.
Second.
First and second, Councilmember Laura, second by Councilmember Lutz. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Camacho?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
City manager report?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Angelina again, but as you're aware, the ongoing federal government shutdown has created a ripple effect across many levels of government, from national operations to programs that directly support our residents. I, um, some time ago, I asked staff to analyze what would be the impacts, not only on our residents, but how could we collaborate with our partners? As you know, impacts are pretty drastic in the interim, the long-term impacts that we have to prepare. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Angelina to give a quick overview of what those impacts will be.
Thank you. This presentation is not going to be as positive as the last one, unfortunately. We find ourselves twenty-eight days into this federal shutdown with talks that it might be delayed past Thanksgiving. And just today, the Senate met once again and voted down the current budget proposal. So this presentation delves into the various impacts of not only the federal government shutdown, but some of the eliminations we see in the proposed budget, federal budget, that will result in permanent reductions to our current programming. So, you know, just for the public and for the members of, that join us here today, wanted to just, you know, I, I know that everybody's heard it in the news every day, but we just wanted to, you know, provide some context as to what the federal government shutdown is, and it occurs when Congress fails to pass funding legislation for government operations. So the federal fiscal year starts October first. So effective October first, because they didn't have a passed budget, there was no appropriations actually approved, which meant that the spending had to stop, uh, the spending that hadn't already been distributed or disseminated to the receiving agencies or uh, customers, clients. So we wanted to differentiate between what services remain operational during the shutdown and which don't. We have entitlement services such as social security, Medicare and Medicaid, and Veterans Affairs. Affairs. Those still continue to be provided by the federal government. Other essential services, considered essential services such as postal service, military personnel, FEMA and travel and transportation continue to be funded as well. There are some furloughed or, or people that are working without pay for now. And there's actions that are on the floor to see if they can get reimbursed subsequent to the shutdown. So some of the local impacts during the shutdown, we have furloughed federal employees and a little bit of that does touch the city. So about three weeks ago, we were informed that the people that provide the actual services to provide the meals to our senior meals program were furloughed. So the city took swift action to ensure that we had part-time rec leaders, thanks to Pam's swift action. And so we actually have our own team providing those services where they would otherwise be provided by federal workers, Title V workers. Then we have the biggest impacts so far that, you know, the county has messaged out every single day because those are the larger deficiencies, disruptions created by the shutdown. So SNAP on the federal level, CalFresh at the state level, and WIC funding have stopped effective November 1st. So the last payment recipients will, will have received was October 1st. The other is the housing assistance, Section 8 is not guaranteed to be available subsequent to December 31st. And I know that that's a long time from now, but, you know, we haven't gotten any indication of how long the, the shutdown will last. So we just wanted to give you that date. Delayed federal grants, so we, most of our grants, as you know, are expense reimbursable. So we spend the money first and then we submit for reimbursement. And if there were, you know, dedicated appropriations and we get that money back because of the shutdown, they are indicating that some of those may be delayed. And small business support as well. Slowdown impacted by furloughs or just a greater need because of the shutdown. So just today, the County Board of Supervisors had another meeting where they're focused on the impacts of the shutdown and have asked the CEO to provide a weekly update and have asked them to also create a, a plan, a funding plan to move forward. So here are just some numbers as to the monthly costs at the county in terms of disbursements to recipients. And CalFresh seems to be the biggest gap here. You have $320 million per month that the county has to pass down to CalFresh recipients. Now, there's no money at the county. Obviously, this is a very large amount. The state hasn't, doesn't have any discretionary funding to produce or lend to the county. So they find themselves short upwards of $300 million. I'll go into the presentation as to some of the measures that the county has taken. CalWorks, it's a smaller subset, but still, you know, here, the benefits are going to lapse December 31st and Section 8 as well. So just today, the county of LA provided a $10 million contract with the LA Food Bank to help buy and disperse food to recipients of the CalFresh program. And since the funding for CalWorks and Section 8 has been continued through December 31st, they're concentrating their efforts more on filling the, the gap for CalWork, I'm sorry, CalFresh program. So here, we were able to pull information specific to the city of Pico Rivera in terms of recipients. And you can see the vast difference between the two programs. The CalWorks program has about 894 people that it services at a cost of $366,000 monthly, whereas the CalFresh program has 7100, over 7100 participants with a monthly amount of $1.3 million. So, you know, with a population of 62,000, this results in about one in 10, one in nine or one in 10 residents affected by the lack of benefits for CalFresh. So what is the CEO's office doing? They're trying to spread the word. They've come up with upwards of $14 million, but they're relying on nonprofit partners, faith-based organizations, the state to try to collect either funds or direct food purchases and deliveries. They're identifying hotspots when, where there are food deserts and trying to come up with a plan to disseminate volunteer workers out to those food deserts to be able to provide the necessary food for the CalFresh recipients. They're also relying on 211 Blast, text messages, emails, billboards and PSAs. And they're, they're changing them daily, right? They're, they're sending them out daily to ensure that people are notified that there are some resources, that their money isn't coming, but they can reach out for food services and food delivery if needed. So now we want to change gears to the impacts of the proposed federal budget. Because while that, those, the impacts from the shutdown can cease for CalFresh and for Section 8, this slide focuses more on the, what is termed as eliminations by the Congress website. So we were able to pull some facts on the eliminated programs. The list is so long that we concentrated on HUD, which is the program that touches more members of this community. So Section 8, as you can see, has a 100% elimination from the federal government. So what that means is they are proposing to shift those dollars over to the state and have the state administer the program. So, you know, for government, that is a mandate, right? Or it's a mandate, right? They're pushing this new program from federal to state and alleviating the federal government of this program. Self-sufficiency programs are also being eliminated. And the one that's been talked about the most is CDBG, right? So CDBG, we use about a half a million dollars a year to provide necessary CIP infrastructure project funding. If you think of the senior restrooms, think of the teen center, all of those are just a couple of examples of what was funded with CDBG. But we also provide about $100,000 worth of funding to social programs such as the Handy Worker Program, SASFID itself for senior meal delivery, as well as, I'm drawing, I'm drawing a blank on the third one, but it's also AIDS in food delivery. Oh, I think I have it on this next slide, actually. So from our annual reporting, you'll see not only how much we expend from CDBG to these other programs, but the number of people that are served. And it's upwards of 600 people that either get housing rights counseling, senior center, senior meals, or groceries are essential goods, good distributions for whole families. So bottom line, if CDBG goes away, and it looks like it is, we lose about $600,000 worth of funding. So that's entitlement, it goes directly to us, it's formula-based, it's based on the population, and we'll have to plan for that. So as of now, we've got no, no clear communication from our partners at CDBG or HUD of, you know, course correction. The only information that we have is here from, you know, gleaning the information from the federal government's proposed budget. Here we lay out some of the other competitive grant programs that we won't be able to rely on any longer for what we usually do and do really well, thanks to this team, which is grants for our capital improvement projects. So without the federal government indicating that they're able to resolve this issue, all we can do is put a plan together in case the worst-case scenario happens, which we're working on right now, and continue to monitor the federal government shutdown for both long, short and long-term impacts. We'll be able to provide social media information shared by the county over to our residents to ensure that they have the needed information for food services. And we'll entertain any questions you might have.
I'd also like to add, I've been in communication with Supervisor Han's office of proposing a food distribution center in the city, just so that we can have more immediate access for our residents for those food supplies. So again, just continuing to work on how we can get those resources delivered to our city in the interim. The long-term is we got to worry about the budget as it moves over and it gets adopted. There are recommendations in the current budget that cuts a lot of funding in half. So we just have to be aware of that and prepare for that in the future.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from my colleagues? Mayor Proton?
Yes. Address released to...
It's on.
It's on.
Yes. No, we're in that discussions. I got a call in tomorrow just to find out where the status of that. They do have their website up and running. We're pushing that information out to our residents. There's a 211. We are still continuing our distribution of our senior meals to our seniors. But again, it is, it is urgent. I, I can tell you in watching some of the meetings, it is overwhelming. I seen the CEO, you know, ask, what are we going to do? And the amount of funding gap is so huge that it just, he, he was almost speechless for that question. We're just going to try and do our best to ensure that we get those resources to our residents. Partner with our, our house of worship entities to see how we can engage them as well. Our food bank operations, again, we just need to be diligent. This is a, a problem that we're going to see because this is it, November. The funding is, is not going to be there for, for a bit until that shutdown is, is, is stopped.
But there's a lot of independent... Good, but, but first, be a little more, I guess, to one. As it relates to the plan, I know you mentioned that you're, right, that you're monitoring. But as we develop the plan, I'd like to... The gap is huge. No way we're going to be able to build that level of setbacks. However, COVID has innovated.
Yes.
How we're going to...
I can, I can tell you in talking to some of my counterparts that they're, they're not monitoring the situation like we are. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to say that because I think, you know, we've seen this problem coming a, a, a month ago. And so now we are taking those steps. We are trying to get at the front of the line to make sure that we get that information and supplies to our residents sooner than anybody else can. Because it, it's a matter of being first in line at this point. And that's why we're trying to reach out to them to get the services here in our city so we can get those to our residents sooner rather than later.
And we have a lot of local partners.
We also have to be cognizant, if you think about $1.3 million a month, that's 1.3 million less circulated in our economy here in the city of Pico Rivera. So there are some impacts to our sales tax that we have to anticipate as well.
Councilmember Lara?
Just briefly, I think today, the governor and the Attorney General for the state of California, she'll, they'll try to stop this, right? Hopefully they get that injunction.
Yes, it was, the governor joined another 23 states in trying to get the federal government to release the $5 billion that is in reserves specific to the SNAP or CalFresh program.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to ask our City Manager, are we still scheduled to do our annual Christmas baskets giveaway, which is food drive typically at the end of November, early December for local residents?
Yeah, that's still scheduled. Yes, that's still scheduled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angelina.
Yes, I, I know we have a lot of presidents, this is the, the last one, so I'm going to bring Jesus up for our legislative update. We just have one, one or two meetings left, so.
I understand there's a game going on, so I'm going to try to get us out of here as fast as possible.
We're losing 6-1, it's okay.
I was, I was trying to prevent more bad news, but it's okay. All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, City Manager and staff. My name is Jesus Garcia, providing you all with a legislative update, also considering a wrap-up of the state legislative session. So jumping right into it, as you all know, the government, the governor's deadline to sign bills was about a week and a half ago, too, about October 13th or so. We had about 2,300 bills introduced, and that's actually a smaller number compared to prior sessions, given that the legislature was given instruction to not to introduce more than 35 bills per member. Previously, they were introducing upwards of 50 per member. So here internally, we, believe it or not, every single bill that comes through, we screen it, we filter it down to bills that match our platform, that are our priority bills, or that align with our contract cities and the league. And then we track them and the most, the ones that are the more priority or the most impactful, we follow through all the way up until they either get vetoed or signed. We, we have a little recap of that later. Just to provide a general overview, the governor and the legislature really went through with their agenda, the, pretty much the politics of abundance is the theme that hit the California legislature. And what that means is the Democratic Party is being more of the majority party at the state level, reframe their thinking, led by Senator Weiner and Governor Newsom, and essentially said, look, we are always trying to put forth these progressive policies, build more housing, environmental, but they saw CEQA as something that stood in their way of doing that. And to align with the abundance policy, their belief is if we want more people housed, we need to build more housing. How do you build more housing? You scale back a lot of what they perceive to be red tape, red tape regulation. But in just, some of that also takes away a local, a city's ability to properly monitor and screen what is being built in their cities. Moving forward, as we all know, Prop 50 is going to be on the statewide special election ballot. A little bit on that a little later, but what the point of that is, is essentially re-envisioning the congressional redistricting in this, in the state in response to what is happening at the federal government, mainly states like Texas attempting to also redistrict their states to put more red seats forward, kind of changing the balance of what's happening in Congress to prevent what they believe is happening at, now with the shutdown. Essentially shifting the power scales so that the current party in power has more legislative leverage over the Democratic seats. And California is in response, Prop 50 is in direct response to that. Early polling shows it as most likely passing. You all seen a lot of ads, I'm sure, hitting your, hitting the airwaves. As of today, we've seen a lot of the no-on Prop 50 ads kind of scale back. I feel like they're seeing the writing on the wall. There is overwhelming support for Prop 50, but at the end of the day, what is, poll is not always reality, so we're just, we're, we're here to see. Also, we saw the legislative budget as they are operating in a deficit. They were a little more strategic with where they put pots of money. Given the wildfire disaster, we did see about $18 billion put into wildfire prevention as well as trying to address the ratepayer affordability, since a lot of the private entity tends to push that on the ratepayer. The state's trying to rebalance that effort and that will most likely have impacts on our own, given that we also have a CCA in prime. Staff is carefully monitoring that. Of interest to us, given that we were successful in including eligibility language in the Prop 4 climate bond that was passed in the previous ballot, they issued $3.2 billion in investments through that proposition. Now, specifically to what projects and what eligibility is yet to be seen, but we're going to be monitoring that closely just to make sure that we're capitalizing on that enhanced eligibility for our needs here in the city and in the region. And also, as you might have heard, with, with the federal government scaling back a lot of federal investment, mainly in high-speed rail as this big target of the administration, the state tried to counter by directly allocating $1 billion directly to high-speed rail, essentially indefinitely, and with another potential $1 billion to come. Couple highlights here from the staff's perspective. We met a lot with Senator Archuleta, as well as Assemblymember Calderon, to ensure that they're continuing to stay informed with all of our priority projects here and... they're continuing to stay informed with all of our priority projects here, and they are taking on leadership roles in ensuring the implementation of our projects. Just this past weekend, we met with Senator Archuleta over at Norwalk Center for Freedom Station, took a tour with officials in the city of Anaheim. Mayor Protem and Mayor Garcia joined us on that excursion, and we had a really productive discussion. More to come later from staff specifically on that, but just to show the regional consensus that the city of Pico Rivera is pushing at the state legislature. Also, we, just a recap, we've submitted over 35 letters directly to the legislature, as well as the governor expressing our position, our support, or amendment language. We actually were successful in getting some favorable amendment languages, some bills, mainly some that were going to reduce local control when it came to outdoor advertising. The author actually responded to our office directly, stated that it was not their intent to impact local control, and scaled it back to specifically impact Caltrans owned right away, so the city can still have full review as to what goes up in their city, I mean, up in our boundaries. We were also successful in getting language in other bills that didn't make it all the way past the governor's desk, a little more on that further. So back to the Prop 50 issue, we're, as given as that's top-of-buy and really impactful what's happening here in the city, this is currently what our congressional district looks like now, to those in the room and to those online. Pico Rivera is highlighted there on the left, this is obviously, this is represented by Congresswoman Linda Sanchez. And this next slide is going to show what the districts would look like should Prop 50 be successfully enacted. The highlighted is what, is what the new District 38 is going to look like. And as you can see, it's kind of, let me see if I can kind of laser it here, or not. Yes. Oops, sorry, I'll zoom in. A little bit up in the top left there, that kind of looks like a straight line, that actually splits the city of Pico Rivera right in half along Washington Boulevard. So we will have an old, our old District 38 representative, represented by Congresswoman Linda Sanchez, north of Washington. South of Washington, to be determined, we'll have a new federal elected representative. So the city of Pico Rivera will in essence have four federal representatives, two members of Congress, and two senators. Here's a little bit of that zoom in on that boundary that I mentioned earlier, the light blue being the old 38, and that blank gray being the new district. Back to the state, so here's just a quick overview, I'm gonna glance through these just to kind of demonstrate some victories, some of the initiatives the governor passed forward, and also our, our role in that process. So the local telephony bill, it's a local revenue bill, we came out and support right away of, of that measure. Some of you may be familiar with that. That's essentially allowing local governments to take back some revenue for like 411, 911 services for prepaid mobile services. It's, the bill was scheduled to sunset this year, we were successful in advocating for its extension. Solachez Bill, which essentially expanded workforce development programs in areas here in the region to support with wildfire prevention, that was successful. We were, we advocated for being able to expand the ability for the city to remove abandoned RVs from public rights away, those that were under $4,000 of value, the city now has the ability to remove those from property, which, you know, can be a blight or a hazard. So just to find here, we wanted to provide more flexibility to local government through AB 650 when it came to the RENA allocations. We came out and said, hey, we want to make sure that when these requirements come down, that there's an expanded timeline, that the cities are able to fully understand what is required of them. Unfortunately, that bill was vetoed by the governor. Another veto that we requested was another streamlining of residential mixed-use projects. They wanted, the AB 1007 would scale back the requirement that a city needs to approve a streamlined plan, I believe from 90 days down to 45, that we requested a veto. Unfortunately, that was passed, again, a part of that CEQA reform package. SB 79, I'm sure we all heard about that, that also passed despite this city's initial stance and its current stance for requesting a veto. What that does, and more information on this later, it's essentially within half a mile of any transit stops, streamlining buildings. So I can go through these individually, or if, if the council has more questions near the end of the presentation. Again, just to highlight on SB 79, the abundant and affordable bill, looking to streamline housing near transit, essentially moving over the zoning and planning to the transit agencies. On the federal side, well, thank you Assistant City Manager Angelina for your incredible presentation on the impacts of the government shutdown. I won't dive into detail there since you did a fantastic job of that, but as you all know, as of October 1st, that deadline's been, that shutdown went into effect. Something else that may impact us locally is at the Supreme Court level, essentially upheld the administration's request to continue roving patrols of immigration, so we're going to monitor that activity. As you all, as I mentioned earlier, DOT is essentially stripping back funding from blue states when it comes to infrastructure projects, California mainly high-speed rail. They've also seen some withholding of funds for Army Corps projects, so we're monitoring that carefully. I do not believe it's impacting the Wider Narrows Dam project, but for sure it has impacted a project in San Francisco. There, as, as we've noted, that the administration is using withholding of critical funds to essentially force compliance with their agenda. That is a theme that we're continuing to seize, different uses of power, different levels, different levers to try to get states to comply with what the, the administration's agenda is. Also, the Supreme Court upheld essentially the federal government's ability to deploy armed forces on America's cities, so we are deploying that, we are monitoring that activity closely. In addition, a lot of existing regulatory efforts across agencies are being scaled back, what that has to do with EPA, with HUD, with DOT, staff are monitoring what that, what, how that would impact any infrastructure projects moving forward, as well as any projects coming in. As we all know, there's essentially a federal grant freeze in reimbursements. I don't believe it's impacted us at the moment, but we are monitoring any future prospects. So just to wrap up, staff is continuing to work with our advocacy partners, essentially with, for the preservation of the Avenida Vicente Fernandez and the sports arena project within the scope of the Wider Narrows Dam. Advocacy efforts for that continue, and we're also working closely with the Army Corps to make sure we're getting as accurate as a timeline as possible, as well as any of the impacts given the ongoing shutdown. So I know I sped through that, my apologies, but I'm open to answering any questions, and I thank you all for your time.
Questions, comments? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, just comments. Jesse, on this subject matter, but a couple of things. One, you did a great job in summarizing the whole session, whole legislative session here. A lot happened through all that, bills that were signed, some that, so, ones that priority ones that we worked hard at to make sure that, that we look at, once that effect of control. And quite a lot to deal with. Thousands of them. By the amount that were signed, was it Jesse, about a thousand?
Yeah, I think it was in the 900s that was signed.
Which is, and we have to, this is important, it's boring, but it's important because we have to follow the state laws. But I, but I wanted to highlight just one thing for my colleagues as well, is that one of the things we've... As it impacts us. Active business. Go to Sacramento. But everything you're doing, Jesse, focusing on legislation and really, really diving into it, Prop 4 was a good example of a big win that staff in general, being active, put that language in there that we now have access first in line for those millions of dollars that are because of the Wider Dam impact to our community. But this is an example, so now that we've done all of this, one of the things that I've heard from a lot of my colleagues, especially working with California Contract Cities Association, that they're asking, how do you, how do you do it? How do, Pico Rivera's doing it? Because it's no longer a subject matter. A lot has changed since I started this, you know, when local government, Sacramento stood in their place, we stood in our place, now Sacramento meddles a lot into local government. And so, and so what's important is that we need to be more engaged in, in this legislation. City governments need to be more engaged, and what we've done in Pico Rivera now has served as a model, and many other cities want to replicate this. So kudos to you, Jesse, city manager, for the team that we as a city are engaged, but also, many other cities want to also follow the level of engagement that we've supported. Once we get them in those bills and we gotta, we gotta fight them, everybody needs to, all hands on deck, because all of a sudden laws change, and what happened? Happened is you weren't paying attention. So anyhow, just a comment, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and for your leadership as well on the Contract Cities Board. And to the council, we'll summarize all these bills that were signed so that you all have an understanding of what the impacts are in a nice digestible format and a memo that will go through the city manager's office.
Anyone other comments? City manager? Righty. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, let's move along, good of the order, AB 1234.
I agree, nothing to report.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes, I briefly want to state that today we, collectively as city officials, I joined our mayor and the rest of the city staff, there was a 20-year anniversary for one of our local businesses, HomeCo. And HomeCo is a provider of kitchen and bath products and services, and they've been a long time business in our city, so I want to congratulate them again on their 20-year anniversary, and of course redoing their home base building, which is a humongous effort, and it's a fantastic-looking building when you get a chance. It's directly across the street from the Walmart off of Paramount Boulevard. So we attended that, the mayor and myself, and, and prior to that, a week prior, I joined staff, city manager Javier Hernandez, and we took a field trip out to Lancaster. Some of us took the train and, as well as Director Ferrer, and a couple of other directors that went out, and we were exploring the idea of getting a soccer team, professional soccer team, out to our city in the future, and part of that is exploring soccer stadiums in other regions of Southern California. Lancaster has the Antelope Valley Alto Municipal Stadium, and we explored the interior and the exterior and how they went about doing that project. Again, it's, we're in exploratory mode, so I'm appreciative of city staff, city manager, and directors getting us out there to explore that idea. More to come on that. And of course, I did have the opportunity to go to our neighboring state of the city, provided by the Montebello mayor and their Chamber of Commerce, and it was nice to follow up with our neighbor city and see all the great things that they're doing, their municipality. Other than that, I do want to remind the community that the annual Christmas basket drive that is assisted by the city of Pico Rivera is going to be held, I believe, at the late portion of November or early December, for anybody who's interested to drive through, pick up a food basket at, I believe, at Pico Park, where we've been having it for the last couple of years, and we intend to have that again. And I'll provide additional date, and the city will provide that date on social media platforms. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my statements, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Mayor Protem?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, I'm gonna try to zip through mines real quick. Allee County Semtation, AB 1234, I attended a meeting there. I also had an opportunity to attend the trunk-or-treat in collaboration with Walmart, our sheriff's department, our fire department. What an amazing event they put on right there in the parking lot, and those kids that attended made out really well there on that event. Our spooktacular Trick-or-Treat Village here at Smith Park, again, the incredible work that our staff does. Congresswoman Linda Sanchez came out and served as a judge, but when you see the transformation, how they put up all these props and all these inflatables and food trucks, everything just coming together, and then it just taken down, you wouldn't even know that it existed. So kudos to the staff. Dr. Sanchez and I had an opportunity to attend McGee Academy, the Think Together After-School Program, where kids showcase their talents, these young, bright minds, it's an after-school program. Senator Archuleta was there as well, a great pro-after-school program going on there at the McGee Academy. Also had an opportunity to attend the Masrobian and meet Your Holiness yesterday, so I had a chance to, to meet with them and represent, and as Councilmember Lutz pointed out, we attended the 20th anniversary of HomeCo, and what an amazing event they put together, from flyovers to decor to horses to entertainment, they just went all out. And just real quick, on a sports note, our Don's Football Team is in the playoffs, all nine teams made the playoffs, and four of those nine teams were undefeated. So they, they entered the playoffs going into this weekend, Veterans Day, November 11th, and then finally, our city council meeting will be on that Wednesday, the 12th. That concludes my report. We'll move into a closed session.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We do have one item on closed session under Conference with Real Property Negotiators as listed as item A, the Smith Park location. Appropriate to recess into closed session.
Thank you. Moving to closed session. Then just...
Right, go ahead. So that's what she's pointing, I heard, I can hear.